I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll call the meeting to order. And first off, if there's anyone out there that would like two minutes to speak, it's an open public forum. If not, we're going to move on. We're going to get the approval of the agenda. Don, is there anything you want to add to the agenda?
No, sir.
Pete? Julie?
No.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Was there anything on your side? Then I will, actually, what I want to do is I want to pull the variance request from Mike and Sue Anderson out of the consent agenda and move that under new business. I'm going to put that, that'll actually be under the slide. If there's no further, did you have something?
No.
Oh, no.
Don's got good ears.
I entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion made and seconded.
And Julie?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. The consented, no, we did the approval of the agenda, consent agenda. Does everybody have a chance to take a look at the claims? Are we going to talk about that side?
No, we'll let it roll. We'll cut that, we'll come back to it.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded, is there any further discussion? Not? Proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearings. We are going to start with AAA manufacturing. All right.
I'll start.
I'll cue in.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the EDA met last Friday. Wes came to our meeting, and he is requesting that, that he be granted the garage out at the Larry Anderson house. He's going to take advantage, and I'll let him explain, of a, of a good opportunity to expand his business and keep JB Lures here. And I would let you know that the EDA recommended to the council that they grant him that garage, and he will pay for the moving of it. So, Wes?
Yeah, so, right now, we are working out on my parents' farm, about eight miles north of Winthrop. And we remodeled an old granary, and it worked for what we were doing, but it doesn't work for all of the steps of the process we need. We can't put a paint booth in out there. We need a little more space. And this building would have enough space for us to do that. We, it would, it would really help to be in town, to have employees in town. It's a little easier. Right now, I have a good handful of high school kids that work for me. And I know being in town would definitely help them work more hours, flexible. And we are hoping to add four jobs, for sure, two part-time and two full-time, and to keep the six jobs we currently have.
So the opportunity really, there's been a change in the manufacturing of lures in the state of Minnesota, and a large manufacturer in the Granary area has been purchased and is moving out of state, actually maybe moving out of country. And a lot of the people who need these lures have asked Wes to do the manufacturing for him. So it's an opportunity to keep something in Minnesota, to keep something in Winthrop and expand it, and to keep a local, important company local. And I might add that the Department of Employment and Economic Development, when they look at job creation, they are willing to lend $15,000 per job, per full-time job. Wes is saying two, two full-time, so they would look in this as, as a loan or a grant of some kind of $30,000, because full-time jobs are important.
If we were to put the building for sale, I can't imagine we'd be getting $30,000.
Not even close.
So, really, to me, I would like to see you stay, I'd like to see you in town and grow the business in town here. I would...
In a nice, free building.
I think from an economic development standpoint, one of our big pushes is to keep the businesses that we have, and in this case, grow one of those. To me, it seems like a...
So, EDA directors in large towns and small towns can't wait for local people to walk in and say, "I have a business I want to expand and keep local, and add jobs." I mean, that's just like finding a needle in the haystack. So, yeah, this, this is a good, this is a good thing.
That is an EDA building?
No, it's a city building. The EDA, gosh, I don't know how, you know, I think it was the city who purchased all that land and negotiated with, with the Andersons and paid for the land. So it's actually in the city's...
So it doesn't have anything to do with the old, with the industrial park?
Well, yeah, when we bought the industrial park, Pete, Larry was living there, and, and we went to him and said, you know, "Look, we, we'd like an option on your land when you're ready to leave," and he granted the city that, and we completely...
No, that I understand. I just wanted to know if that was an EDA deal or it was a city deal, that's all.
It was a city deal.
It's both.
I think it's both, yeah.
So we need a motion to proceed to give them the building? So moved.
So motion made to allow him to take the building. There would be no extra cost to the city, other than the building. You'll be taking care of all the moving. Say you have a new, new area. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
There's a second. Is there any further discussion?
And you'll be getting an electric customer, a water customer, and a...
Tax customer.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Wes. I'll be by to see you this, this winter for some jigs.
Okay, I pulled the variance request for Mike and Sue Anderson. So then, Sue could just, you know, first, let's go over what the variance is, and then Sue can comment. So...
Sue came in, she wants the variance to put a fence up on their property on the vacant lot to the west of their home. The variance is to, the, the variance that the planning commission was presented with had two options on it. One was to make the fence eight feet, and the six, six foot is right now the current height. And the second thing was to have, to not have the gradient corner going down on the corner, so that, you know, right now, code says that you have to have a gradient corner for visibility. But this fence is sitting back 36 feet on one side and 26 feet on the other behind their fence line. The planning commission voted to be, allow the, not having to do the gradient fence, but they did not vote to allow the eight-foot height. And that's where we're at.
It says a two-foot lattice.
Right.
Which would make it eight feet.
Yes. Right. And that's the part that they did not recommend pass.
Oh, oh, you mean, that's what they want, a six with a two?
Yes.
Okay. I thought that was the recommendation of the planning commission.
No.
And they can build a six-foot, and the city wouldn't be involved.
Right.
After it's gone up, they hate that they wouldn't be approved of the city.
And the gradient on the corner.
And the gradient.
Yeah, yeah.
That lot's high, so...
So, Sue, did you have some comments?
I wanted the lattice up there to match the front. We have lattice on the front of our house underneath our decks, and I just thought it would finish out. And then if we had a taller vehicle, that we did have back there, that would kind of hide it. I mean, not that the neighbor had to see it. Because we've had problems with our neighbors, neighbor. And we just figured, we'll get it up, sure the six fence is there. He can still see over the top of it if he wants to. He just has to go upstairs in his house and see it.
Whether it's six-foot or eight-foot?
Well, eight-foot would be helpful, but not, I mean, we're on a three-foot hill to start with. And I wanted the lattice up there to make it like it's ours, you know? But, yeah, it's eight-foot.
Okay, the recommendation from the planning committee was...
Not many recommendations.
The, the recommendation from the planning commission was to allow the gradient variance on the corner, because the feeling was that it's so far back, there's not the public safety concern that you would normally have on the corner. However, the planning commission recommended that the variance for the eight-foot be denied. The main discussion from planning commission members was, especially with the hill, they felt that the eight-foot was just too high, and it wouldn't basically look aesthetically pleasing. I did, I did try to discuss with the planning commission members that there are five statutory criteria that you have to consider when granting a variance. The only one that was really in play here is that in order to grant a variance, there has to be a unique condition with the property that's not caused by the property owner. So there's got to be something unique about the property that's got, that's not basically the property owner's fault or doing. I had brought up to the planning commission members that I felt that was an issue, because it didn't seem to me that there was anything unique about the property, and that really the need or the want for the fence was just based on the desires of the property owner. So I tried to bring that up, but to be honest, the planning commission didn't focus on that, but just seemed to not like the idea of an eight-foot fence.
You were at the planning commission meeting also?
Yes, sir.
Okay, council? Is there any more you'd like to say?
No, it's up to you guys.
So...
So as a council, even though you got a recommendation from the planning commission, the, the final decision is up to you. You can adopt the recommendations of the planning commission, or you could do something different. But, so you could, if you disagree with the planning commission, you could grant the variances as requested, you could deny both of them. If you felt you needed more time to consider this, you could table it for a month. Decisions like this do have to be made within 60 days of application, but you would have enough time to consider it at the November meeting if you want.
I didn't have time to drive by and look at it. I, so I, I don't have a, a good opinion about how it looks. I'm a little hesitant to just throw out what the planning commission said, because we put those commissions in place for a reason. You know, not that, as Don said, we can't differ from them.
Pete, Jim, what do you think?
My understanding is part of it would be eight to the back, and then towards the front would be six.
No, it's going to be eight feet all the way around.
No, I mean the planning commission.
It'd be six feet all the way around.
Oh, six feet all the way around.
Yeah. For the, if, if you take their recommendation, it's six feet all the way around, if you knock off their recommendation, it would be eight-foot, because there'd be two-foot of lattice all the way around, right?
And the reason behind that ordinance that we have as a city is that people don't put up regularly high fences. Is that...
Not a good reason. Dale, you have any feeling on that?
I'm, I'm inclined to lean towards the planning commission.
I guess I would be, too.
Well, I want to give Sue an opportunity. So, if you, you can table it, or you can get more information, or entertain a motion, whichever council decides.
Well, the only reason that we would probably table it, it's only three of us here, not five, so...
It's up to you?
Must make a motion.
I'm, I'm okay with tabling it, but...
Well, what are we going to do? Entertain a motion? Okay, we're not getting a motion. All right, so if you want to table it, the reason you want to table it, the reason is you want to go take a look at this yourself, to see what it's going to look like, get more information, is there more information to get on it?
Well, the, the more information that you could, the best information just to be to see the property for yourself, since there is a hill there, it may be good for you to visualize it. If you wanted to table it as well, I could put some findings of fact together, really with anything involving variances, especially when, if you turn down a variance. There should be specific findings of fact that are made. If you wanted to table it, I can prepare that for you for November.
November meeting.
Yeah.
That would be, that would be good.
All right, we're going to table it.
I can go ahead and start with my fence, right?
Not...
My six-foot fence.
You can start with your six-foot.
Because if I'm waiting till November, we could have three feet of snow.
You can't get the posts in, right?
You're being optimistic.
No, I'm being true. We could have had 29 inches already.
No, no.
Right.
Thanks, Sue.
Thanks, Sue.
This is a pretty good size. Hill's pretty high.
Let's talk about the part-time temporary hire.
Okay. The administration committee interviewed two applicants today, and the recommendation from the admin committee is to hire Linda Shogren on a part-time temporary basis. But we didn't decide what to pay her. So what do you guys want to, 10 to 12 was the advertised?
Did she have a preference? Well, no, I mean, I'm sure she said what she would like.
She did not say what she would like. Melissa and I talked about it today. And you make the final decision. We both felt 12, because she's not getting any benefits, and it's just two and a half days a week. But we would like to see probably more than 10.
I'll make a motion that they pay her $12 an hour.
Second.
So motion made and seconded.
Oh, don't you say, shouldn't we amend that, that we hire her and pay her $12 an hour?
Yeah.
We're just going to pay her $12 an hour.
She doesn't have to come in.
All right, we have a motion made and seconded, to hire, $12 an hour. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Sorry, Pete.
Thank you. Melissa and I both thank you. She was hoping to be here tonight, but something came up.
She asked for 15 or 20.
Playing around.
Oh, geez, I hope I have the...
Three bids.
I do.
I'd like a maple tree.
Did we have...
It said one bid is low.
...specifications that they bid off of, so all of them...
Yeah, it was in the paper. I don't have the ad in front of me, but, yeah, we had, Don rolled up. Yep, that's the only one.
This is from Ballant Tree Service. Wall tree trimming, tree removal, stump grinding, any other, or any other related task. Includes power line clearance, planting, consulting, or treatment of insects and diseases. $75 per two-man crew hour, $100 per three-man crew hour. Includes all equipment and small tools. Thank you very much for this opportunity. John Sapper. Is this currently where?
Yep.
I don't know what we're paying right now. I was going to look that up today.
I think that was the last bit, too.
Yeah.
That sounds about right.
I think we had them do some work for us once.
Okay.
We've, he's been good to us. I mean, I know he's been busy the last, you know, recently, but...
They're all busy, Jen.
Yes, they're all busy.
You know, they, they, they're in the paper. Everyone hopefully had an opportunity to...
Bid on it.
To bid on it.
I think they know about it, so...
Okay, Julie? Julie made a motion to accept the bid. Is there a second to that motion?
One second.
A second to the motion. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, resolution supporting a HIGER grant for NVRRA.
That's a grant that the Minnesota Valley Regional Rail Authority is applying for. They would like our support with it, so that they can apply for the grant. They're asking for all the cities on the rail line to show some support, either resolution or a letter. So, do you have any questions on it?
No problem with that. They support the rail line. I'd like to see it.
Yeah.
Entertain a motion for a letter, a resolution?
Oh, I like a motion.
Okay, there's a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Unfinished business, we have none. City administrators report.
You're too fast for me, I'm not ready.
Told you it was going to be a quick meeting.
Trying to make you, like, easy, Jen. Thank you, again. Okay.
Give you home time to watch Dancing with the Stars.
There you go. Okay, the street committee met with Michael Henderson to discuss his storm water drainage. It was recommended to have the city engineer look at the problem, and Brian was in town on Friday and did get a chance to look at it. He's going to get me some costs together on some drainage options, and I also emailed Mr. Henderson to let him know that Brian was here. He looked at it, and we're working on, on some options.
We should find out how well it's working.
Yes. At least it's not coming in the row. Ron Treblehorn has requested to meet with the street committee to discuss the drainage issues he had on his field off 11th Street. We did meet previously to discuss that, but Ron wasn't there. I think he would like to come and have the street committee hear his opinion, so we should try to set up...
Where is the water coming? I mean, what's the...
What he's saying, it's coming down, or Main Street, going out of that way.
Does he own that land, or does Mrs.?
No. Cindy Earhart owns it. She owns it, he runs it.
And they put in some tire, and it'll be something.
That goes down to the ditch, right? It runs down into the ditch and out?
Runs into the field, and some of it kind of sits there. My understanding, and maybe, maybe before we even talk about this, we should have a street committee meeting with Don here.
Yeah, but I was hoping to set that up tonight, but our street committee's gone, so we'll have to set that up some other time.
All right, can you call them tomorrow and get that...
Yes, I will.
So that we...
Yes, Mayor.
There's anything that has to be done by November, we get it.
We can just set it up and tell them to be there.
That's true, we can do that.
All right.
The electric committee met to discuss the electric rate study. There were portions that they liked, there were some that they didn't. I have been in contact with Dave to discuss those issues. He sent me a revised rate structure, and I'm in the process of applying various numbers to it to get it to work, or see if it'll work. So, once I get that together, I would like to send it out to the electric committee and meet with you guys again, to kind of go over it before we bring it back to the council. Eighth Street is, is done for the year. They pulled all the signs, and they have the first layer of tar down, so hallelujah, that's done. There's about two weeks left of electrical work on the project on between Carver and Hennepin here, so hopefully that'll get done before the snow flies.
Can they work it well this way?
Uh, no. Yeah. Brian is hoping to have the final assessment hearing at the November council meeting, and he's also going to have the feasibility study for the 2019 project done. He'll have that here at the November meeting as well. The fire department is working on burning down the Larry Anderson house. The asbestos check was done. Roger did stop in Friday, and he's going to go out there and give me an estimate on what it would cost to remove it. He didn't think it would look like a whole lot, and he didn't think it would be a big deal. I don't know that it'll get done this year yet, so, the burning it down. But Troy said he wasn't in a hurry either, so...
So who's it for spring training like they did last year? They'll get a bunch of departments together.
Yeah.
What about the start of the society...
They did go out there and look at it. They do have a few things, some trim and some doorknobs that they would like, and I told them I would keep them posted as to when, you know, that would happen. So, we've been in contact. Oscar talked to Mike Neisen. He's going to try to see if he can get that north end walking path done this year yet, but with this rain, who knows, so...
Yeah, go either way.
That was before this weekend. And I was hoping to have the jail abstract for Don today, and I didn't, so I'm going to have to call them tomorrow and see where that's at, because he told me Friday or Monday. And that's, that's all I have, unless you have anything for me.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff, esteemed attorney.
Wow.
I know.
You're mad?
Full of steam, I don't see...
I apologize for just getting this to you tonight. We had a council meeting, or, excuse me, we had an EDA meeting on Friday, so that was after the packet went out. A city website upgrade and community branding. We have moved into, into the production stage for the new city website. Early results are very encouraging. We presented them to the EDA on Friday. The site will feature prominently three, the city of Winthrop, the Chamber, and the EDA. It will be interactive for all users and all businesses. We'll have a presence on the site that they can add and subtract from as they choose. The cost to be on the city website is going to be, we don't know yet, it's going to be minimal or nothing for these businesses. The site will allow email and text alerts, thanks to your city administrator, she brought that up, to citizens for such things as snow emergency and electrical allergies and other events that might happen, which is good.
So they can request...
Yes, they would go on the website, and this, yeah, came from another conversation that Gordy and I have been having about parking during snow emergencies.
Wouldn't that be nice to be able to send them, yeah, it's great. AAA manufacturing, thank you for your vote earlier tonight. We continue to work with Wes to expand his manufacturing operations and take advantage of the opportunity he has before him. We are working closely with Winthrop Opportunities. We, we have had Goldschmidt movers up to, and we're expecting an estimate on the cost of moving that building. That will be Wes's expense, but we're just facilitating the discussion for him. And the housing study update, the towns of Arlington, Gaylord, Gibbon, and Winthrop have issued an RFP for a housing study. The four towns are also working to establish a housing team that will make it easier to work together on housing issues. Don, I guess I wasn't at the last meeting, we haven't talked about it, but, but have they provided you feedback on that draft that you gave them?
No, sir.
But I think that they will, right? I think...
Yes.
So...
They're waiting until they get the RFPs back, and then when we know how much it is, then we'll let Don know, and he can finish it.
So the four towns are going to kind of sign a loose MOU that they can, and Winthrop would be the fiscal agent, and outcomes and stuff are just kind of spelled out. It's Don's idea, it was a great idea. The shop local campaign is moving forward with the first drawing of, and this is correct, this is incorrect, it's not bimonthly, it's semi-monthly. My dad owned a semi-weekly newspaper, it came out twice a week, I am wrong, apologize. Set for later this month, the effort is being led by the Chamber, the Winthrop Foundation, and the EDA. And I think it's going to be good, and I think it's going to bear fruit, I hope. Are there any questions?
Not, we'll move on.
Thank you.
John?
I have nothing.
Nothing?
Yeah, he's getting nothing together.
Yeah, I'll put together, find you some half.
Sorry, I'm in a mood tonight.
I thought this was...
Water sewer, was there anything there?
Great minds.
Did they have any movement on that, putting that ladies in? I haven't seen any action around there.
Putting what in?
The Carlson House, the Larson House.
To that house by the cemetery?
Oh, I haven't asked Joe. I was going to do that, too, and I didn't. I'll have to ask him how, Lorraine Corderoy?
Corderoy.
Yeah. Yep. Well, she's not asking for assessments or anything, she's in...
No, no, but I was wondering, I thought that was...
Just wondering what the status was, you know?
I'll find out.
I know he said he was going to hurt, yurt you down last week.
I know they didn't do it last week, but hopefully this month.
The electric department, an MPA meeting update?
I did not get that report, but Pete was there.
You got this.
Yep, yep.
Thing, thing being is, they want some more flyers out if we can in that, for renewables, for...
Oh, and the bills?
Yeah.
Okay. They, I know Dave's been working with Melissa on that.
And, but, I don't know, things in the electrical thing are, they're really kind of, kind of moving. It's interesting, they want, one of the moves is that, I don't know if there's really that much net needed, but they seem to think so, maybe in certain areas, not ours, is put in charges, chargers for electric cars.
See, they did it when New Orleans last week, yeah.
I saw that.
I, my understanding was that they would pay for that, but I told them, "Well, you don't have to worry about mine, I probably wouldn't even own a golf cart," so...
Hey, Pete, here's a news story that just came out late this afternoon. GM has announced that they're moving to all-electric cars.
All right.
In the next 10 years, they won't produce any fuel-powered cars, they'll all be electric.
Really?
And they'll still come factory with the rust on them.
I did ask Darv Turbus once if they would... I did ask Darv Turbus once if they would consider putting one in at UFC and he said that not, not at the moment. They weren't real interested.
How long would it take to actually get a charge?
Half an hour.
Now, tell what he said. He said overnight.
Well, there's some
A fully charge, I mean, not just
There's some that that will charge in half an hour.
Get from Winthrop to Gaylord and just wait for the
But the range is getting pretty long on those now too.
So then you build a coffee shop too.
You can do an around-town charge in thirty minutes. So like if you lived in New Ulm and you weren't driving out on the highway, you know, you could, you could stop and have a cup of coffee, do a charge and drive around the rest of the day at city speeds. You're not going to be able to drive from Winthrop to, you know, shock a few, your electric car on a thirty-minute charge. It's not going to happen.
Some batteries, yes. Some batteries, no.
It's not going to happen.
Anything else with the MPA meeting update or anything else that you had?
No.
Labor chief's report? Ambulance, nothing? Police? Zach, you there?
Looks good.
Things are going well?
He's just here in case the meeting gets a little rowdy.
We got a rough crowd tonight.
Cable commission, no meeting?
No meeting this one. Was there?
No.
Oh geez, I'm two minutes
Are we making up for last month?
Look at you.
Last two months.
I have a motion to adjourn. Motion made?
Three of them.
Three motions made, no seconds. I guess I can keep up. I know the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
He says, electric department, first thing, Sesame Street, and the other
Oh geez.
That tonight.
Yeah, when I first came, it was after